Five o'clock, folks. Well, seeing it's five o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. And Councilor Gibson, I see you online with us. So great to have you with us. And we will go ahead and get started. This is the fifth meeting of the 143rd Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. And this is the last meeting before Christmas and the last meeting before we get into 2023. So we'll have a lot of fun tonight and be jolly and everyone will be nice and not naughty. And we'll, we'll move along. The first thing is disclosures of interest. Are there any disclosures of interest from any of the members? Seeing none? Next minutes.
Your worship, I have a motion that the minutes of the meeting held on December the 12th, 2022 be confirmed. Moved by Council Herbert, seconded by Council Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor of the minutes? Any opposed? That's carried. Next.
Council will now resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item relates to an analysis of Bill 23, More Homes Built Faster Act 2022, an informational report. I have motion that report PD 5922 relating to the analysis be received for information and for the council authorized staff to monitor impacts of implementing the measures included within Bill 23 and report back to council at a future date as information becomes available. Moved by Council Baldwin Sands. Seconded by Council Wookiee.
Okay, questions or comments on the report? Council Clark.
Thank you, worship. Through you to staff, I was just wondering on a typical subdivision, whether or not we could guesstimate the type of impact that we're, we're looking at in this report.
Mr. Pompili, it's great to have you with us tonight on this topic.
Thank you, worship, and through you to rest of council to help answer that question. I believe the changes through Bill 120 and the subdivision processes, just that going forward, we are not to have a public meeting for plans of subdivision. The, I, I, I believe how I see that going forward is we will still circulate applications of plans of subdivision to residents. And, and, and as an approval authority, we'll take any comments that we receive into consideration to inform our, our decision in, in, in terms of approving any applications. But that being said, most plans of subdivisions are also have associated with them a zoning bylaw amendment or often an official plan amendment. And that goes through a public process. So, and they're, they're almost always circulated at the same time. So I don't see those impacts as, as, as being too much of a concern from, from my perspective in terms of that there it will still be that public process through the Parallel Planning Act processes of a zoning bylaw amendment and/or an official plan amendment.
Council Clark? Supplementary?
Yes, thank you for that. I was thinking more in the, in the, the aspect of developmental charges. What, what, what you think we would, would lose on those?
Go ahead, Mr. Pompili.
Yep, I apologize. Sorry, I, I misunderstood in your question. I thought it was related to the changes to subdivision specifically. But it's really hard to, to, to grasp what those, what those costs will be. That's, that's something that we plan to monitor. We're, we're fairly well positioned in this municipality in terms of dealing with some of those impacts and absorbing some of those costs. As I understand it, and I've had some discussions with the city treasurer, the, we won't feel those impacts. The main point of those impacts until we develop a new development charge bylaw, which is scheduled for 2025. But, but there's still, there, there will be some financial impacts through subdivisions in terms of some of the parkland impacts in terms of lands that we would be entitled to to have dedicated to us. And, and there will be some impacts in, in terms of some of the development charges, depending on, on the type of development. If it's a, if it's more affordable housing, which is a positive, will, will be taken in less in DCs. So the, all those costs and those impacts are really hard to quantify at this point in terms of what those impacts will be on the municipality, but those are things that we will monitor as best we can and report out to council as those are known.
Okay, Council Baldwin Sands.
Thank you very much for this report. It is quite full of information, so I do have a number of questions. I'll piggyback first. Councilor Clark's question, you talk about the area where growth pays for growth. And with that attainable, affordable housing, you gave that there possibly is going to be a decrease of up to 40% in development charges. So again, can you go over that first and foremost, and then I have more questions after that, please?
I apologize, council, I, I, counselor, it's difficult to kind of assess what those, to quantify what those numbers will be. We, we will have to monitor and assess them as, as they come in. They, they, they could be, they could be significant. And on the positive side, if, 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 if they impact us, they impact us because the proponent is bringing forward affordable development or attainable development, which is a plus. So there'll be a bit of a balancing act there to follow.
Good.
I appreciate that comment, but in your analysis, you did have growth pays for growth. So how that looks going forward is going to be having some questions for us here. Correct?
Absolutely. That's all. I've always felt comfortable in terms of saying that growth pays for growth in, in the municipality. With these changes that are in place, I'm, and, and most, and this is, this is coming from across the board, from all the municipal organizations that have written in on the impacts of Bill 23. And that's, that's the one consistent that they're saying is that, is that we're, we, I, I feel like we can say it less confidently that growth pays for growth as a result of this, that there, the impacts could be down the road that the tax base may have to help fund some infrastructure expansions as a result of growth. But, but then again, these, these, these measures that are in place are, are phased in and, and they're for a period of time of four years. And it's to deal with the, the impacts of the need for housing. So in four years from now, if, if, if these measures have a positive impact, they may be phased out. That, that's really hard to, hard to, to, to measure or quantify.
Good.
Thank you. Now, in the category of conservation, I'm concerned about the entire watershed that we sit in. The species at work risk that have been identified by our conservation authority, including the native flora fauna, the trees, the species such as the bald eagle, the monarch butterfly, the snapping turtle, the variety of fish species through the kettle and Dodd Creek that have identified as species at risk. And above that controlling invasive species, how do you see us moving forward with that? Because we've had the impact of the Emerald Dash Bore, the sponge moth and the zebra mussels in the past. How can you see us looking at and being assistive to the conservation authorities and hoping to have these protections in place and over the next four years at least?
Thank you. That, that, that's, that's a very good question. And that, again, again, is one of the challenges that we'll be facing. And when, when, we've had some discussions and initial discussions with the conservation authorities in terms of what is our plan then going forward? We've been working with them up, up to this point in terms of putting together a framework for municipal MOUs where we, where we would be able to share resources, share costs in terms of future endeavors, assessing future development impacts. We don't have that ability now going forward. So what those impacts may be from the municipality is whether we provide a, obtain a contracted service with other professionals, more third-party reviews maybe, maybe in order, or we, we, we have to rely more heavily on the, the, the applicant's professional assessment and have that peer reviewed. So those may be some of those impacts that, that we have going forward from a cost perspective.
Thank you. In addition to that, I also noted the parkland being reduced as well. And to me, those two go hand in hand when you want to preserve and protect. And yet our parkland is being reduced. How are we going to innovate in order to go forward?
Again, very good, very good question and, and, and something that we're, we're going to have to continue to monitor. And I, I'm, one thing that I noticed in my short time here with this community is that the development industry that we have in this community, for the, they're, they're local. And they, they, they bring forward good development because they, they live in this community. So they want to make sure that the communities that they develop are communities that they want to live in. Their friends are going to be living in and their families are going to live in. And so I'm just from experience, from what I'm seeing, the, the, the park land, the, the, the land that's being dedicated, the parks that are being built are pretty, pretty substantial and, 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 and done well. I'm hopeful that that's going to continue, but it will have some challenges for staff to work through. And again, those are, those are things that we've highlighted that, that are potential impacts and, and matters that I'll be working with Mr. Bray and other staff to make sure that we're well positioned to, to deal with any position, potential impacts of, of the parkland changes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And our trail system as well, which they've been very good at making sure we've had real systems throughout all of our new subdivisions. So I give them 100% of the credit for helping that initiative move forward. My next question is on the section that you did on groundwater. This might be a question for Mr. Lawrence and Environmental Services, but some of the things that you brought up, such as the impacts to drinking water, stormwater management impacts, upstream and downstream impacts, talking about slope, setback and stabilization, all of those, I know the slope stabilization usually comes into feedback from the conservation authority, but what do we have a plan to pivot to something else to move forward with some of these issues, especially with what we've been seeing coming out of this report and the impacts going forward?
There, there isn't a pure strategy in place at this moment, but that is, that, that again, is something that we'll, we'll be monitoring. And we'll be, we'll be, we'll be working with other municipal partners as well that are, that are all dealing with these changes and, and, and make sure that we're positioned to, to respond accordingly. And, and, and also deal with a lot of the municipal organizations that are monitoring the changes and, and working with their municipal partners and, so that they're all positioned to respond in a responsible manner. So we'll, 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 we'll keep a focus on that going forward.
Go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your patience with me. This might be out of your area of expertise, but I noticed under development charges that reserves, especially for long-term projects like a community center with an aquatic facility, there are now restrictions that are put on those that we would have to report on every January. And there are, again, additional restrictions with some of that reporting and how we are able to go forward with those development charges and building up reserves. Can you take a moment to address that?
Oh, certainly I can. There's, I think there's two mentions of dealing with reserves where municipalities are required annually to either spend or allocate 60% of their various budgets. One is a parkland budget, another is dealing with services, hard services. If, if we're required strictly to spend it, I'd have, I'd have a lot of concerns because most municipalities responsible municipalities do plan for their reserve funds in, in a, in a, in a planned manner in terms of how they're going to expenditure those. But the way the legislation is, is, is put in place, it's spend or allocate. So I, I, I believe that will just put more emphasis on the municipalities to ensure that the funds that are in reserves are allocated accordingly. A lot of these measures are in place, really, and this is just an opinion piece, to, to deal with a lot of issues and problems that are experienced primarily within the GTA. And reserve funds are huge issues for a lot of those municipalities within the GTA in terms of what developers are paying for development charges and development. And I think that's a constant thorn in their side in those areas in terms of how are these monies being sent, spent, sorry. So I think that's, that's where the genesis of that issue is coming, coming from. I don't see it as a huge issue from, from our perspective, but I'd have to defer a lot of that to the director of Parkland and to our city engineer as well in terms of how those, if, 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 if I've spoken out of, of term here.
One more?
I have one more small one. And I noticed that parking for renters and owners can impact because parking, a tenant could pretty much block a driveway now, if you read it correctly, or if I'm not reading it correctly. So I'm wondering what the impact could possibly be for emergency response to moving forward with, when we start putting additional residences in a residence, how that's going to impact, especially if people have a double driveway. There's now intensification projects where there are three residents on one former residence. And yet there is no parking restrictions on how they can get in and out. So I'm concerned about emergency response in that type of situation. Could you elaborate?
Through you, I'll, I'll do my best to, to elaborate there. There could potentially be some impact, impacts with some of these changes when it comes to parking. Yeah. And, and when you mentioned, there's one that you didn't mention that I'll, I'll bring up as well. That could be a concern as well. But in terms of the legislation allowing three units as a right, that, that, there's something similar in place now. And the only additional requirement is that each unit has to have one parking spaces, and those parking spaces can be in tandem. So I think that's the only, the only legislation there is that parking can be in tandem. And, but, but the zoning bylaw is still in place in terms of the, the, the maximum widths for driveways and parking areas. So I, I don't see where, and, and those would have to be approved by staff in terms of ensuring that the three spaces are located legally and, and, and meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw. So, so from that perspective, I don't see where there'd be impacts on any fire routes or or any other type of emergent, emergency vehicles. The one that concerns me a little bit more, which you didn't mention, is some of the site, some site plan requirements now are, have been removed. Prior to Bill 23, any development that had three or more residential units had to go through site plan. And in those units, parking areas were one of the areas that we reviewed, no fire routes, if that was something that was included within, within that development. The new legislation now has, and, and I believe this is in an effort to streamline and, and hasten the, the approval process. Any development now that now is 10 or more residential units is, or 10 or less is not subject to site plan approval. That, I, I, that concerns me for your six plexes, your eight plexes, where, where parking would, would be an issue. It puts more onus and emphasis on staff to, to, to catch that during the review process that all these, these, these measures are are, are met. And it doesn't go through the site plan process where then you have more sets of eyes on it. You have a, an engineering layer reviewing it on top of a parkland layer. So, so that, that is a concern, but as a staff, we have to put, make sure that we put proper checklists, checklists in place to deal with those applications when they come in. And that's, that's something that we're going to be moving forward and doing in those measures in place.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much for your commentary and appreciated your report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilor Kohler next, but I wanted to remind Councilor Gibson, if you have questions or comment, wave vigorously so that you catch my eye. Thanks. All right, we're going to go to Councilor Kohler next.
Thanks, your worship. The directors done an excellent job answering that. I, I guess my, I'm just going to change to, to a comment and basically say that, you know, when you look at the report and obviously listening to the director's explanations that we're positioned well to deal with this. We, the staff and council's done a great job making sure that we haven't been taking advantage of things. And when it comes to the allocation, I know we've always worked well with the developers when the development charges came down, identifying those things that were going to be in there. And from time to time, the developers held us to account. Fairview Road for one, you know, as to when things are going to go. But I think the unfortunate things are bills like this come into place because municipalities aren't being responsible. And thankfully for us and our ratepayers, this council and staff have been and will be well positioned for it. And when you look at it, growth paying for growth, we just maybe have to look at it differently. If things that we normally cover through development charges weren't going to be there, then we need to take into account that that new assessment will go to be paying for those. So it's, it's definitely, you know, when we look at what's happening here, there's a housing crisis. Two things create that, supply and cost. And development charges, the developer's not eating it. The person that's going to buy the houses. So we just have to continue to make sure that we're planning the way we're planning and will be able to manage this. And obviously, that, what the director's answers substantiates that.
Thank you, Councilor Kohler. Councilor Peters?
Thanks, worship, and thanks to, to the, to staff for the report. I just, I, minor more comments, and I think we all need to recognize that having sat around municipal table dating back to 1980, these are some of the most significant changes I have seen ever. And I think staff in the municipal sector should agree. And I think what troubles me with a lot of what's happening right now is so much of this is undermining us as duly elected officials. You know, road widening, we need to ride, widen roads for bike lanes, et cetera. You know, that is potentially going to be restricted going forward. I, I look at some of the changes in the Planning Act, and this is one that the citizens need to be concerned about. That third-party appeals launched by specific groups significantly am, hampers the ability of the average citizen to appeal a decision. That's being taken away. We have in this LPAT, we, we've made decisions as a council where we have disagreed with the developer because we believe we know what's best for our community, not some outside unelected body like LPAT. Yet this process now is going to override municipal decision-making again because we can say no to something, LPAT can say yes to it, and then we have to pay all the costs as municipality. I think as taxpayers, we need to be really concerned of what we are on the hook for here. The Heritage Act changes are, are significant as well, too. But I think the one that really concerns me in, in all of this is the liability that is being placed on us as municipality. These changes to build more houses faster, to add new units to a house, to allow a garage to be converted. We have got to be diligent with our planning and building staff to make sure that permits are being taken out because goodness forbid, somebody illegally transforms their garage and, and turns it into a unit without us knowing about it. They, they, and, 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 you know, even some of the changes of the Conservation Authority Act of removing setbacks. So somebody who now had to be 100 meters away from a floodplain can be 30 meters away and approval has to be granted for this? And then they get flooded out? Guess where they're coming back to? So I, you know, I, 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 there's, I understand some of the rationale, but I just really believe that this is a a process that's being done that is very much undermining our ability to have growth pay for growth. And, you know, I guess I look forward to the monitoring, but I think we need to, we need to stay on top of this one. But the liability out of all these decisions really scares me. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Council Wookiee and then Council Herbert.
Thank you very much. This might be for Mr. Pompili. Or I see that Ms. Sheridan is on the call. My concern is that I'm happy that they're, that, that the building up affordable housing is being promoted. I understand that, I understand that they're, you know, taking that out of Parkland dedication. I understand all that stuff. My concern is how do we, what kind of mechanism is there in place now, or could there be in place to make sure that, you know, somebody could build something and say it's affordable, but then five years later decide, you know what, in fact, I'd like to rent this for market rent or make it into a condo and sell it or anything like that? What are some of the mechanisms in place such that we can make sure that affordable housing stays affordable as it goes by? And I understand that the definition of what affordable is, 80% of market rent is up to debate about whether that's actually affordable. But any commentary you can make would be great, or Ms. Sheridan, I know that we do this now with, I know there's mechanisms in place now, but what's your point of view on this? Thank you.
I'll let Mr. Pompili go first, and then we'll see if Ms. Sheridan has comment. Go ahead, Mr. Pompili.
Thank you, worship, and another good question, counselor. That, that is something that we're certainly going to have to work towards in, in terms of assessing what are, what tools we have available to ensure that those are in place. Some of the ones that we have that we utilize right now are through specific agreements that we ensure that specific agreements are in place, whether it's in a development agreement. We'll have to explore whether that's something that we can, we can put in a subdivision agreement, but something that gets registered on title between the city and that developer that locks down or ties down whatever that minimum number or that number of affordable units are. And, and, and then that they, they satisfy the definitions of affordable and attainable as, as in these, in this legislation. What concerns me with this legislation here is, and again, this is just from reading it. We have to, we have to fully grasp it a little bit further. Everything here that seems to be based on what market rent. And that fluctuates and changes, so there'll have to be specific language that can capture that. So that's the, my best first crack at answering that question. I'll, I'll defer to, to Sheridan, see if she can, she can assist as well.
Sheridan, your, your input?
Sure, yeah. Thank you very much through you, Mayor, to Council Wookiee. I, we do have, we usually have agreements with anybody who we do a project, affordable housing project with, we always do. And in those agreements, it talks about doing a yearly income assessment to make sure that the people who are living in the units meet the standard that we, we put forth, which is a low-income housing. It's a provincial-wide like program that's used to determine who, who has a low income. And then every year they report back to us and make sure that the person who's living in that unit stays within that income level, but also that the rent is affordable and within market rent or whatever we decide, if it's 80% of market rent or market rent. All those things are negotiated with whoever we have the agreement with.
Thank you. Okay, Council Herbert and then Council Clark.
Thank you, worship. Well, first of all, Lou, thank you very much for this report. It's, it's very eye-opening. And there's lots of things going to happen with Bill 23. Council and Colin and I were just talking last week. Wouldn't it be nice to see more information in Bill 23? Because there's a lot of things in there that things are going to happen. They don't have answers for them, but they're just going to do it. So, so my, my, my question would be, is, is there any avenue for appeal on some things that we don't agree with? Or do we just have to agree with it?
Mr. Pompili?
The, the, this bill was introduced on October 25th, and it was put out for, for, for consultation. But the turnaround time for comments to come in was, was, it was a tight window. And it received royal assent on November 28th, so a month, a month after. So and most of these measures come into effect immediately or after January 1st. So there really is no So there really is no mechanism for appeal.
Thank you, then.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you. Through you to staff. Do mu- do municipalities have the right to draft bylaws that require X number of units per development?
Do you mean affordable units per development?
Yes, that's the key word there.
Mr. Pompilly?
Uh, there there are some measures um in the Planning Act that that um allow for things like inclusionary zoning. Um, but it's it's not available to all jurisdictions, like our our jurisdiction isn't one that 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 would be available for. Or some jurisdictions that that can implement those measures, like allow a along designated transit routes. Things like like that na- nature, which we don't, we have in place. But that 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 is something that we, as a as a municipality, need to need to start to look at to see if there are ways that. We can get a better handle on in terms of ensuring that. Um, affordability targets are met. Um, i- i- it's it's a challenging one, one that we we're faced with with every development, you know, is there is there an affordable component within this? And often, we're just faced with the the with the facts that are pre- presented to us from proponents usually is. We're providing a mix of housing. Which by virtue of that, your your mix of homes that are attainable to to different income ranges. Um, so some are more affordable than than others, but they don't really meet that true. You know, affordability rate as defined by the province. I think some of the measures that are in this legislation that would then. Um, allow a developer to avail themselves to some of the perks of building. Affordable development might prompt more of them to bring bring that type of development forward. But if there are tools that that we could utilize to to uh to do that, those are certainly are are measures that will. Ensure that we put in our new official plan as we as we do updates there and then implement that through our zoning bylaw if we can.
Mr. Pompilly, w- we did that from a market rent apartment point of view through our CIP. This doesn't prevent us from doing that. As a matter of fact, it encourages it. Okay, so we can still ask for affordability from that. I think Counselor Clark's question was on a subdivision, or can we designate certain affordability? But you say it's a, the developer can using some of the things in Bill C twenty-three or twenty-three want to do it. Good. Further questions or comments for uh? Well, for anyone. Thank you for the very detailed report, Lou, but I I I think I feel like you do. Fo- six months might tell us better than today as to what influence or impact it will have on us. So please keep us in mind as you notice things that have come up because of it and share share back with us. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
The next two items relate to uh notices of a public meeting from the Committee of Adjustment. Uh, to take place, the meeting takes place on January the twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. The first one is regarding an application for a minor variance to permit a detached garage with a floor area of a hundred and nineteen point five square meters. Whereas the maximum permitted is sixty-seven square meters and with a height of four point oh three meters, whereas the maximum permitted is four meters. And that's for the property at thirty-one Park Avenue. And the second relates to an application for a minor variance to permit a monument-style sign. One point five meters from the front lot line, whereas the minimum front yard depth permitted is six meters. And that is for the Holiday Inn Express and Suites at two seventy-five Highview Drive. Unless there are any further items from the members under Strategic Indirection and Development, Your Worship. Uh, we'll now move into Community Engagement and Services. At this time, there are no items on the agenda unless there are any items from the members.
Shane, none?
Uh, we'll now move into Infrastructure and Civic Operations. Currently, no items on the agenda unless there are any items from the members. And Your Worship seeing none, uh, we'll now move into Corporate Governance and Administration. A first item relates to the twenty-twenty-three interim tax levy. I have a motion that report TR twenty-three twenty-two. Relating to the twenty-twenty-three interim tax levy, be received for information. And further, the council approved the preparation of a bylaw to establish the twenty-twenty-three interim tax levy. Moved by Counselor Kohler. Seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Second item relates to the twenty-twenty-three borrowing limits. I have a motion that report TR twenty-four twenty-two. Relating to the twenty-twenty-three borrowing limits, be received for information. And further, the council approved the preparation of a bylaw to establish the twenty-twenty-three borrowing limits. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor McCollie.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Your Worship, unless there are any further items from the members.
Counselor Peters?
Thanks, Worship. Um, I had the opportunity this afternoon to uh catch up on some social media that I haven't for a while. And there's a lot of comments out there about uh the lack of lights at Pinnipore Park, and you know, there's also been a lot of good comments made as to what happened at Pinnipore Park. And I had the opportunity last week, I know Adrian Jefferson in our Parks Department is going to look at some things and to bring back to us, and I look forward to that. Um, but I also see that uh that there's a uh the Good Vibes Community Association, and I know CJ has talked to. Counselor Wookiee and Counselor Clark about how do we engage the community, not just with an event like this, but just getting that volunteer spirit back. So I see they're having a public meeting or a meeting coming up um next this week. Um, uh, you know, I I encourage people to take a look and see what they're doing, and I look forward to seeing what comes back because. I um I spoke with Jack Valoots today, and I can remember in nineteen ninety-two, City Council. Received a letter from a a wonderful lady since passed away by name Hazel Marlat. And Hazel had this idea after a visit to Simcoe that we needed to do something in Saint Thomas to cheer things up, and. I remember Jack Valoots coming into the corner office and saying, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, let's make this happen. And it was amazing just from those two little seeds, how it grew, but. How, you know, like a a plant or a tree, sometimes they start to wilt and they die off, and. Maybe this, these are the new seeds that are being planted, so I I I personally, you know, I've heard people talk, commenting, and I I agree. There's some things that we can do. Um, I'm I'm sure we all would be supportive of it, so I just. Wouldn't, don't want people to go out and start trying to do their own things. Let's make sure we have a coordinated effort.
Well, thank you, Counselor Peters. I wa- I might was also spending some time on social media, talking about that and a couple of other topics this weekend. And really did challenge those that wanted to 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 return the volunteerism to Fantasy of Lights to. Um, we have a fantastic park that could really fulfill this, but it's not, it can't be done only by the city. We'll take a great volunteer group. So you're right to say that few of them have gotten together on a on a public meeting and. Or to look at next year, twenty-twenty-three, as to uh what could happen and and how it could be done. So I'm anxious to hear back from them, and you're right, I spoke with uh. Uh, Adrian today from our Parks Department, and she's got a bit of her proposal she'll be bringing to us early in the year, too, as to. How the Parks Department can play well with this and make it work um in conjunction with a large volunteer effort from the community, too. So looking forward to both of those groups doing their things and coming back to us. That same germ of a seed that you saw that many decades ago and see if we can do it again. Other items? Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. The City of Saint Thomas and the Elgin County Health Recruitment Partnership are pleased to announce the twenty-twenty-two Health Recruitment Scholarship recipients. As follows, Brandon Brower, Karina DeCracker, Daniel Black, Laura O'Gorman. And Patrick Akers. I know that council shares. Congratulations to, from us and the county, to all of them, to our future community doctors on their receipt of their scholarships. Thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, Counselor Baldwin Sands, and it's great that you thought of those five scholarship award winners, but. I know that your work on the Health Recruitment um Department Committee has been second to none, so thank you for your help on it, too. Let's hope one of those five scholarship winners or five of them decide they want to set up a medical practice after school here in Saint Thomas. That's the intent, that's why we do these things, so um if you know any of the five recipients, remind them Saint Thomas would be a great place to work afterwards. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Your Worship, if there's nothing further, under this committee, I've motioned that the recommendations, directions, and actions of council and committee, the whole. As recorded in the minutes of this date, be confirmed, ratified, and adopted. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor McCollie.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
No reports of committees this evening, Your Worship. Also, no petitions and communications. Next order of business is unfinished business of council. Seeing no items from the members, we now are in new business of council. I worship seeing no items. Uh, we'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Uh, moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
I have a motion by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Clark, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee, the whole, and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
First bylaw, please.
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the nineteenth day of December, twenty-twenty-two.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, next item, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to adopt an interim tax levy.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That bylaw carries, and the third bylaw, please.
Third and last bylaw is a bylaw to authorize borrowing from time to time to meet current expenditures during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That carries. I rise to report the successful passing of the three bylaws.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Clark, that the reported council and committee, the whole, on the three bylaws be received and adopted. The same be read a third time in gross, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
One notice under public notice that the Corporation of the City of Saint Thomas hereby provides notice of the of its intention to adopt the twenty-twenty-three. Operating budget and the twenty-twenty-three capital budget at its meeting to be held on Monday, January the ninth, twenty-twenty-three, at five P M. Uh, no notices of motion, uh, Your Worship, at this time, there is a need to move into closed session. I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land. And a personal matter about an identifiable individual. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor McCollie.
Before we take the vote, I would like to uh remind the public at home, we'll be going into a uh in-camera meeting now. And won't, we'll only rise out of it in order to adjourn or pass anything that we do while we're in the private uh. Uh, the pu- the non-public meeting, but I wanted to remind all to uh. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We won't be back to talk to you again till after both of those those events, but remember. Um, those less fortunate in our community, remember, hug your families, um, and uh. And take a little time and just think about how great the place of Saint Thomas is, and we thank you. Uh, on going into closed sessions, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's Carrie. Thanks, Rose.